We come into this place, the things that we would do will be pleasing first of all to you, and if it's pleasing with you, we ask that we would do it according to your will, not our will. Bless those who will be on program, bless those who are just watching, listening. Now Father, we pray a special blessing upon those who are lost, loved ones, sick, wherever they may be, we ask Lord that you touch their healing and heal their bodies. This is our prayer, this is our hope when praying in your name. Amen.
Connect on the agenda's petitions and comments. That is time on the agenda for anyone to address the council on an item which is not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. If anyone wants to address the council, please come now. Okay, hearing done. Adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to second to approve adoption of the agenda. All in favor?
May I make one correction before you approve, Mr. Mayor? Okay, I'm sorry.
Are we at the?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm speaking too soon.
We are dunking the agenda now?
We're trying to, yes. We've got a motion, had a second. All in favor vote by saying aye. All opposed. Now what was the discussion down here?
On the consent agenda. It's on.
According to consent agenda, when it comes up on the first item, there's a line there that says, the first one is the minutes from July the 15th of 2018, that may be June the 19th, 2018.
The wrong one.
Sir.
It was the wrong one, listen.
Yeah, just not a problem.
What was?
With that correction, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion made in second to approve consent agenda. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Presentations, we don't have any. Consent.
Did it.
Just did it, done, done.
We'll do it two times, huh?
There's six.
Six.
Are we at the public hearing, is that where?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first is a conditional use permit, CUP SP 1608 Jameson. I'll call on David Bamford to present the town's presentation.
Mr. Mayor, if I could go through the procedures. I'll go through the procedures now for these, both of these two hearings that are going to follow. First, the conditional use permit, CUP SP 1608, and then the special use permit, SUP SP 1803. These are both, one is an application for a conditional use permit, one is for a special use permit. They both require a quasi judicial hearing, which means sort of like a court hearing. That means there needs to be kind of a more formal courtroom proceeding than you would typically have in a public meeting. The special rules in quasi judicial hearings are as follows. First, there's a special procedure to assure that council members can render a fair and impartial decision. When we get to each hearing, I will ask the council members if anyone has a preconceived bias or a lack of impartiality, which would make it difficult for them to have a fair hearing. And then we're going to get into the issue of ex parte communications. That is basically, an ex parte communication is one that is, takes place outside of the hearing room and typically occurs before the hearing. So it's, you know, someone coming up and talking about this matter to a councilman or councilwoman. Basically, at that point, we'll go through and ask if anyone has any ex parte communications to disclose. And then finally, the law requires that testimony on conditional use permits and special use permits will be sworn testimony, and that it's limited to what is called competent material and relevant evidence. In this type of case, competent evidence is generally evidence presented by an expert witness. That's going to be someone who has specialized education, training, and experience in a top, in a particular field. So when we talk about the expert testimony, that's what we're talking about, people that, a lot of things like this are going to be people who work in planning, in land development, engineering, architecture, property value appraisals, and the like. And then after that, we'll have an opportunity for anyone else that wants to, even as people who are not expert witnesses, to make a comment about the public hearing that we're having. So with that, with those rules kind of put forth, what we want to do is get, ask everyone who's going to be a witness and plan to testify tonight, to come up, and clerk will swear everybody in at one time for both of these two hearings. That's for the conditional use permit, CUP SP 1608, and for SUP SP 1803. And first, we're going to deal with conditional use permit, CUP SP 1608. And before we have the presentation for that, I want to go through and ask the council members if anyone has a preconceived bias or lack of impartiality on this issue, which would make it difficult for the parties to have a fair hearing.
Anyone have anything to discuss?
Okay. The second question is, have there been any ex parte communications, you know, regarding these matters and with the parties who were coming before us? All right. With that said, what we'll do is just go ahead and have the presentation from Mr. Bamford from Planning Services. Oh, yeah, first, we need to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the public hearing for CUP SP 1608.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Jeff Treesenberg, Planning Director for the Town of Garner, 907th Avenue. This first case for the Jameson subdivision, the applicant is CAA Engineers Incorporated on behalf of Homestead Developers LLC. This location is on the south side of Maxwell Drive immediately to the east of Smith Elementary Upon some re-surveying, the project originally was suspected to be 15 acres and odd change, but we did find throughout the course of the review that there actually was an error in the surveying, and it actually comes in at 13.4 acres. The Planning Commission did review this case to check for staff concurrency, that the plan meets the requirements of the UDO on July 9th, and it's now here before you tonight for the public hearing and possible action. Just to quickly recount, this case does not have a zoning component, a rezoning component. The zoning, the applicant decided to go with what is existing in place, which is an R9 conditional use that was approved back in 2008. Single-family detached housing is permitted as a use, subject to the approval of the conditional use permit, which is before you tonight. As mentioned, it's about 13 and a half acres for single-family detached residential. Typically, there is a 9,000 square foot minimum lot size, however, there is a 20% reduction in that area allowed where the lots are adjacent to a conservation and/or riparian buffer. That comes in at a minimum of 7,200 square feet, and that has been, that option has been exercised in a few cases. Here is the subdivision plan, Maxwell Drive. Runs across the top portion of your screen. The lots that are highlighted with a star are those that are taking advantage of the special reduction allowed for 7,200 square feet. This property is sandwiched by two drainage ways. The larger drainage way is to the east, and then there's a smaller drainage way to the west between the school and the proposed site. The property does drain from north to south, so as you see those two drainage ways highlighted in blue, they're kind of converging towards each other. This property drains both, to both of those channels. And you see down here at the bottom, there are two proposed stormwater collection devices, and I'll tell you a little bit more about those as we go forward. So in reviewing for compliance with the UDO, we're looking at six major categories: architecture and building materials, landscaping and buffering, utilities, parking and access to the site, lighting, and then any other applicable town plans and policies. First, we just want to highlight the architectural zoning conditions. This is part of the existing zoning that is in place with the R9 residential zone. These were conditions that were approved again back in 2008. So they require that each dwelling unit will be at least 1,800 square feet, each dwelling unit will have a two-car garage, each dwelling unit will have at least a 36-square-foot covered front porch, and at least 120-square-foot patio or deck. The exterior facade of every home is to be at least 80% brick or stone. Each dwelling unit will also have a masonry foundation with a crawl space for at least 70% of the area. Typically doesn't include the garage because you're entering at grade. And then number seven is that the option of the builder, owner, the requirements of two through six may be altered, as shown in that table below. So for example, if they choose not to do a patio or deck, they must increase the heated square footage by 50 square feet. Also, if they don't do at least 80% brick or stone, they have to increase by 400 square feet, so that would bring it up to 2,200 square feet. So again, we just wanted to highlight these. These are part of the existing zoning and is not being proposed to be changed or altered in any way. So in looking at the subdivision plan, we looked at the landscaping and buffer requirements. This subdivision was required to have at least 12% tree cover maintained on the site. Given that there are substantial buffers for those drainage ways, they easily met that with existing vegetation that will be preserved. There is no streetscape buffer, but they have voluntarily provided an enhanced streetscape along Maxwell Drive. The street trees are provided in accordance with the regulations, one per 40 feet of street frontage. And the perimeter buffer was, we determined was really not applicable because it's surrounded by single-family. We don't require buffers where single-family is directly adjacent to other single-family. There would typically be a requirement for a buffer against the school property, however, due to that drainage way and there being a 100-foot wide noose buffer already in place, we were inclined to give the deviation due to the underlying objectives of that requirement being met. So here again, just a quick look at the environment and the floodplain situation. Again, this is Maxwell Drive, this time along, again, the northern part, the top part of the screen. This is Grovemont to, oops, sorry, got a little ahead of myself. Grovemont running across the bottom part of the screen. You can see that this drainage way coming down from Greenbrier, that's a fairly substantial floodplain. We do, of course Grovemont is downstream from this site. Here, you see some of the 500-year floodplain in red coming up towards the school, that's that other drainage way. So we have applied our conservation buffer to the floodplain here on the eastern side of the property. That saves an additional 50 feet of tree cover along that side. But again, there is, there is some pretty substantial collection of stormwater. To mitigate stormwater impacts, the developer is proposing to build two bio-retention cells at the southern end of the property. I pointed those out in the map at the very beginning. Those ponds have been sized because we know that there are fairly substantial stormwater issues already to the south. Engineering did ask for these ponds to be sized to meet the 100-year storm event. So if you think of one of the major hurricanes coming through, that's the type of storm that these ponds are built to handle. A lot of times, we only require the 110 and 25, but in this case, we did ask and they did provide for the 100. They are reducing nitrogen and treating for 85% of their suspended solids. Because of that, payment to a private mitigation bank will not be required to bring the overall project into compliance with noose rules. In terms of water and sewer, public water lines are located adjacent to the site in Maxwell Drive, as is the sewer. You see those in blue and green highlighted on the map. They will require approved construction drawings from the City of Raleigh prior to final plat In terms of fire protection, the inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved these plans preliminarily. Transportation and access, there will be two entrances off of Maxwell Drive. We got permission from NC DOT to limit the spacing to just 400 feet. Typically, they require 500 feet between entrances, but because Maxwell is not a heavily-traveled road and will also be further restricted in the future on the 401 end to a ride-in, ride-out once DOT finishes those, they were willing to go ahead with our standard typical street spacing at 400 feet. This also allowed the developer to avoid having a very, what amounted to a very long cul-de-sac with just one entrance into the subdivision, which would be problematic from an emergency response standpoint. So Maxwell will be widened to a collector street standard, which will include curb, gutter, and sidewalk, which will give the subdivision sidewalk connectivity over to Smith Elementary. Parking will be provided for the male kiosk with on-street parallel parking. The residential requirements are being met with both driveways and garage spaces. Lighting is just limited to street lighting, and that will be provided prior to construction document approval through Duke Energy. So then we turn to conformity with adopted plans and policies. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not have any updated recommendations for Maxwell except for the completion of sidewalks, which are being provided. Otherwise, the road does function as a two-lane collector and is being widened accordingly. So with those proposed improvements along Maxwell, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2010 and 2018 transportation plans. We took a look at the Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenways master plan, which did not reveal any particular plan recommendations in this project area. So the builder will be doing a fee in lieu of parkland dedication, which will be collected at building permits, and so therefore, this plan is also in conformity with Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenways. Finally, in terms of the UDO, after sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project is now proposed as in conformance with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance with a few site-specific conditions, which are listed in your report. The Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings that the plan was in conformity with adopted town plans and policies and recommended approval with that unanimous vote, as long as the standard conditions and site-specific conditions are met. And here are those site-specific conditions. Prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the developer shall be responsible for any road improvements as required by DOT and agreed by the Town of Garner. That's one of our standards, just to catch in case anything ultimately changes in DOT's recommendation. Prior to first final plat being recorded, the Planning Department shall be provided documentation of a homeowners association and restrictive covenants. Prior to construction drawing approval, a petition for voluntary satellite annexation will be submitted. And prior to the issuance of each building permit, that fee in lieu of parkland dedication shall be paid to the town. So here before you tonight, the permit may be granted following a finding that all 10 of the special or conditional use permit criteria are met. The permit may be granted with additional reasonable conditions to address any development impacts. And for your motion, we ask that you refer to your worksheet, beginning on page 63 of your packet, for the motion to approve or deny CUP SP 1608 Jameson subdivision. And with that, we conclude our presentation, and we'll turn it back over to you to hear from proponents and opponents for both sworn expert testimony and questions to be answered by those experts.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll ask the council first, do y'all have questions?
Jeff, if you would, go to page on the plan sheets, C4. Got it in the, on the agenda, I'm not sure if you got it on the...
I don't, but I'll...
Okay, that's fine.
I'll pull it right here.
The subdivision plan with the topo? Is it? The two lots south of the mailboxes are the, it shows the approximate location, it could be the, the area within which the house could be located. Is, will grading be allowed to raise the houses above the natural grade there? Get the first floor elevations above natural grade?
Yes, as long as they do not grade into the conservation buffer.
So they, they would have to keep it outside the 500-year flood?
The blue, what you see in blue on the screen in front of you.
They've got some flexibility. The footprint or the area in which the home could be built gets down to within three feet of the, that flood level, and so I'm going to think I've got, as long as we've got flexibility to the homeowner's desire to get above that, even if they wish to go higher, that's all I'm looking for. They've got flexibility.
Yes.
That's good, that answers my question.
Could I ask a question?
Please go ahead.
And I noted under the transportation plan, the information there, it says, obviously Maxwell Road functions as a two-lane collector and is being widened accordingly. Can you elaborate a little bit in terms of the widening of the roads?
Sure. So DOT typically just requires a minimum of anywhere from 20 to 24 feet of ribbon pavement. Our collector street standard in the UDO is slightly wider, just in case we need to eventually squeeze in a turn lane somewhere. A lot of times, we can do that without having to move the curb and gutter. It's wide enough to accommodate that. So they will be adding just a couple feet of asphalt to the southern edge of Maxwell Drive and then binding that in with the curb and gutter. So eventually, it would be, it would meet the town collector standard, which is just a little bit wider than the DOT minimum.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Okay, this is the public hearing. If you wish to make comments or address the council, please come forward, state your name and address. You may address the council.
Good evening. My name's Mike Crowley, CAA Engineers, 1233 Heritage Links Drive, Wake Forest, North Carolina, 27587. I'm the engineer on the project. Some of you may recall seeing this project some many years ago. It was a little bit larger in footprint back then, is now primarily south of Maxwell Drive instead of the parcel north of the, of the highway as well, the street as well. Probably the biggest issue that anyone might bring up regarding this is stormwater management, and I'd like to give you some additional testimony clarification on what the stormwater management system is and why we designed it the way we did. You can see there are two ponds located on the southern side of the property. The phase line that splits the property onto the east and west side runs pretty much along the high point, the ridge line through the property. So Phase 2 is on the western side of the property. All of that pavement and house lots drain to the pond on that side of the phase line, and similarly on the east side where Phase 1 is. Typically, as the planning director said, we would be required to design stormwater management devices to control the two 10- and 25-year storms. When this development was first looked at so many years ago, we also offered to control the 100-year storm. So what we have is two ponds, there are bio-retention facilities that allow 85% TSS removal, as opposed to something like a wet pond with a level spreader that would not provide that TSS removal. TSS, as you know, is total suspended solids. By, by designing these to, to control the 100-year storm, what we end up with is not only the two 10- and 25-year storms, but also the 100-year storm. We've designed them so that the post-development discharge from these two ponds and all the contributing drainage area is less than the pre-development discharge. So essentially, what you have is drainage that is better controlled in the post-development, in the post-development condition than it is in the pre-development condition. So we spent a lot of time getting this to work. We've talked numerous times with staff to have a plan that does work and a sustainable pond system. That's why we're using the bio-retention areas. They cost more to build, they're a little bit harder to maintain, but they provide better quality effluent. So that is, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer it. The other, the other things that have come up in the design of this development is the sheer amount of undevelopable land, which we use as open space. We're required to have 10% open space, about 1.3 acres. All of the blue areas, which include riparian buffers, floodplains, and the 50-foot strip against the floodplains into the site, we end up with over 2 and 1/2 acres, or almost 20% of the site is in open space. So a tough site to develop because of the natural features surrounding the site, but a decent development with, with good stormwater controls and a lot of open space. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Anyone else in the audience? Connect, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Is there a motion? Close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, well, let me see, am I on the right page here? Yes, I was going... I move that we approve CUP SP 1608. And that, excuse me, I move the council to accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in section four of this report as our own, and finally, the application meets the 10 permit criteria in section 3.1, 4.1, and therefore approve CUP SP 1608. It's presented with a standard three condition, the four identified specific project conditions. At this point, I don't have any added conditions, I don't believe.
Second?
Motion has been made with a second. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion unanimously carried. Next on the agenda is a special use permit, SUP 1803, CAZI.
Yes, and before the presentation...
Yes, and before the presentation, I'll go ahead and go through again those rules for the quasi judicial hearing. This is a special use permit hearing, SUP SP 1803. Again, it'll follow the same rules as the previous quasi judicial hearing. The hearing in SUP SP 1803 is now open, and I want to make sure I ask the council first if anyone has any preconceived bias or lack of impartiality, which would make it difficult for the parties to have a fair hearing.
The most clear.
If that's not the case, we will move on to the second point, which is that we, the law prohibits ex parte communications about the proposed application in a quasi judicial case. Ex parte communications, again, are those that occur outside of the hearing room, typically before the hearing, conversations, telephone calls, and the like. We just want to ask if anyone has any ex parte communications on the council to disclose about this project? And then we'll go ahead and move on and have the presentation from Stacy Harper from the town staff, and then have the expert testimony.
Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was talking with Stacy beforehand, and I think this is her first time appearing before you, so I did want to introduce her. She is fulfilling Jenny Saldi's position now as principal planner, and she will lower it. But Stacy comes to us from Wake County for a number of years, and prior to that, with the town of Wendell, so we're very happy to have her onboard and have her here tonight.
Welcome.
Hello.
Let's see if I can get y'all connected back up there.
Happens to everybody on their first night.
When I lowered it, did it?
Yeah, it may have. Just enough. I was like, wait just a minute. And see if, and then stop. And see if that's enough.
Before you tonight, again, is Kazi, which is special use site plan SUP SP 1803. The applicant in this case is Underfoot Engineering, with the owners being IGH Investments. This property is located at 1251 Timber Drive East, and it's plus or minus 1.31 acres. It did appear before the Planning Commission July 9. This is your zoning and land use map that does show this as a regional commerce center, which are located exclusively along major arterials and are usually within close proximity of one another. Crossing a major arterial or freeway, the centers are auto-oriented and a mix of moderate to large retail establishment. The existing zoning already fulfills or meets the land use plan, and no rezoning is needed in this case. Here you'll see the surrounding zoning, which is all MXD-1, with the theater directly behind the site and the shopping center as well, with a parcel on both sides that are vacant. The proposed use is a restaurant with indoor seating. It's permitted as a special use permit per the MXD-1 zone and the I-40 overlay. It's approximately 7,238 square feet. This is the site plan. You'll see that along Timber Drive, and then circulating around the back in with the shopping center entrance. You would enter in like you're going to the theater, and the circulation runs around the back of the building with both entrance and exits at the, the rear where the shopping center is located. Again, we look at six major compliance areas, architecture and building materials, landscaping and buffering, utilities, parking and access, lighting, and other applicable town plans and policies. Here is the rendering that they provided for the building materials and colors. It is three colors of brick, with the primary color being red, brown. Secondary colors are called autumn blend and white stone, which does match the overall scheme in White Oak Crossing Shopping Center. The roof is a simulated Spanish tile roof, which is a painted metal, and it's achieved that way. And then there's bronze window and door frames, as well as canopies. You will have hidden rooftop utilities and rooftop ventilation system. There's also a stucco screen wall that you'll see that is in front of the service entrance, and then also a four-foot tall wall that is in front of their planned zen garden that they have labeled on the site plan. The landscape and buffer requirements are met with a combination, mostly new plantings, and in the buffers and VSA areas, there were three street buffers and one perimeter buffer, which is on the south side only. The street buffers are met by adding new plant material, and there are some existing conditions on two sides as well. The vehicular service area has canopy trees and shrubs in planting islands. There's no FEMA floodplain areas on this site, and no features that are subject to Newt River riparian buffer rules. Stormwater management is subject to both water quantity and quality regulations. It was, this site is located in a previously approved stormwater plan, so that accounted for the future development, but not for the nitrogen, so a payment to a private mitigation bank will be required. Public water lines are located adjacent to the site, and sewer lines have been extended to the corner of the property already. The inspections department, together with the fire department, have reviewed and approved for fire protection. Parking is based on one space for every three seats in the restaurant, plus one space for the office area. There are 68 parking spaces with three accessible required, and that is what is provided. The site is bounded on three sides by roadways, and access will be from the internal shopping center road that I showed you earlier at the beginning, at, at the rear of the building. The onsite sidewalks will be connected to the public sidewalk that exists on Timber Drive East and to the entrance to the shopping center. The lighting is shown, proposed by Duke Energy, conforms to the UDO standards. And the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan identified Timber Drive East and a future expansion as a four-lane divided facility. Timber Drive East in its current state is already developed as such, and therefore, the site plan may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. The site plan can be considered in conformance with the Parks and Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways Master Plan, as no further recommendations were made. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance. And the Planning Commission did unanimously confirm staff's findings that the plan was in conformity with adopted town plans and policies, so long as two conditions were met prior to tonight's public hearing, and they have been shown and reflected correctly on the site plan. A special use permit in this case may be granted following the finding that all 10 of the special use permit criteria established by council are met, and the permit may also be granted with additional reasonable conditions to address development impacts. For the motion, we would ask that you refer to the worksheet, beginning on page 84 of your packet, for the motion to approve or deny SUP SP 1803 Kazi. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions that you might have, and for testimony from others.
Anyone have comments?
One question. Ms. Harper, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Did you just mention that they have satisfied the two site-specific conditions that were later stated in the text of our agenda package?
Yes, sir. There were two landscaping conditions that needed to be met, and they did amend those plans between commission and tonight's meeting to satisfy those requirements.
So we're just back to the three standard conditions? Thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Okay, if you're in the audience or wish to address the council on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Terry Boylan. I'm Thunderfoot Engineering, and my address is 1149 Executive Circle in Cary. And Stacy did a really good job of giving you a comprehensive description of the project, and I'm here to answer any technical questions that you might have beyond what she's already told you.
Any questions? Good afternoon, we'll close the public hearing, call for a motion.
Move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in section four of this report as our own. We find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in section 3.14D, and therefore approve SUP SP 1803 Kazi as presented with the standard three conditions.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, thank you. All right, there's two more public hearings, two annexation hearings. First, I'll call David Bamford from the town staff to make the town's presentation. We'll open the public hearing one more time.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is one of two annexation public hearings tonight. This is case ANX 18-04. This is a vicinity map of the property. It's a single-family house located at 7400 Bryan Road. The owners are Brian and Camille Bagwell. The property is almost an acre, at .92 acres. And the reason for this request is that the property owners have made a request to, to connect into the public water system. There is a water line that runs along White Oak Road, and per the policy, they need to follow a voluntary annexation petition. And this is a copy of the staff report that's in your packet. The property is zoned R40, which is a low-density, single-family zoning district. We did advertise this public hearing in the News and Observer, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions, comments? Thank you. David, I want to close this public hearing, call for a motion.
Move to the Dr. Ordnance 2018 3924 involving the annexation of property at 7400 Bryan Road.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is the annexation petition, 1805 Withers Road. I'll open this public hearing. Go ahead.
Mayor and members of council, this is annexation petition ANX 18-05, and this is also a request to connect to town water. However, this is a commercial business. This is Ford's Produce, which is located at 907 Withers Road. In Tryon Road is this street here that's located in the northern part of this map. The area in blue is the existing town limits. The property is approximately 1.6 acres. And this is a copy of the staff report in your packet. The property is zoned service business, which is heavy commercial, and there is an agricultural business that's currently operating on the site. And the reason for the water request is that they got, I believe, a site permit for a greenhouse, so they needed to have the water connection for that addition to the site. And we have reviewed the case, and we did advertise this public hearing in the News and Observer, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, anyone who has with this public hearing, if you wish to address the council, please come forward. David, you want to wrap up? Give us a wrap-up. Ready for a motion?
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, we got to close the public hearing.
Move to Dr. Ordnance 2018 3923, ordinance to extend the corporate limits to the Town of Garner.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, thank you. New and old business, North Carolina DQ grant application, Tony Talk, Town Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Several weeks back, it came to my attention, in a conversation with the town manager, some ongoing issues that some of you, this dates back a while, may remember, were addressed. They're still having some problems with wells, contaminated wells, and other issues on the Gin Street, and I can pull this up. I've just shown some lines to show the thing, but I can pull it up as an overhead if it would like. But the town at that time extended the water line out and down Auburn Road, connected it to provide relief for some contaminated wells in this area east of Gin Street. Evidently, there have still been ongoing issues with some of the groundwater contamination from the old gas station that was in the church here. And I'm here tonight to basically seek a resolution by the council, allowing staff to pursue a CDBG grant to extend the water mains in this area to serve the needed properties. And at this time, there has not, there will be a lot of work with some other agencies, Wake County Environmental Health, we've contacted some folks at the state, to determine exactly which wells are having problems, lay out a project area. So it is going to be somewhat of a, a long-term commitment to get this grant application in. Brief email conversations today, did, they, they said expect a spring submit. There is, one of the deadlines comes up in September, but they said there would be no way we could get the information needed to, to be contained in the grant application. So don't want to let it be, be felt that we were going to do this quickly, but again, if all of the lines, these would probably wind up being eight-inch water lines, the project cost could be somewhere around $150,000 to $160,000. Again, we would determine that a little better as we go through the process. Are there any questions that I can answer for council when considering this?
Yes, Tony, who will manage the project?
If it goes through councilman, it would be done with the town managing, being the pass-through for the, the grant dollars. We would be basically seeking design firms, design of the water, and then construction of the supplies.
Oh, the town will manage the project?
That is correct, sir.
So we make application for the CDVG funds?
Yes, sir.
We make an application against the typical allocation that we would normally get, and it would offset other projects, or is this a special case that would not affect other projects?
I do not know 100% sure that that would not, there is a three-year window on CDVG applications. Our other monies come through Wake County, so I wouldn't get findings on that. That question came up... That question came up today in some conversations I had with the staff, so I will determine that before we make application at all.
Will these, will these, the properties that will be served, will they be annexed?
That was a question that we did ask of the City of Raleigh. Per our merger agreement, they are supposed to petition for annexation. However, if the council did not desire to pursue that method, the City of Raleigh understands reasons for that. We would just need the documentation, which we are going to obtain, indicating that there are needs to take these people off of the wells, existing wells from drinking water. So in other words, getting that resolution and getting that information enables us to not have to annex the area.
There's no resolution here for us to...
No, sir, there's not tonight.
So what are we, what are you asking for tonight?
I guess what I'm looking for tonight is just understanding from council that it's okay to pursue this matter.
And also authorized you to apply for the grant?
Yes, sir, to go through, not necessarily apply, but we would come back. There's public hearings that would have to take place in the calendar year of the application, and then to your question, Councilman Kennedy, regarding the, how does this affect the other dollars that we receive, CDBG dollars that come through Wake County? I would like to get clarification on that, and given that this grant application, from what I'm finding, is not going to be able to be completed by the September deadline, it gives us some time to come through, but I guess the other thing, I didn't want to get out in front of council if it was not your desire for us to pursue this matter.
I don't have any problem pursuing it. When you've got folks with contaminated wells, do you proceed forthwith, and if they can be, if their funds are available, then we're the logical ones to apply for them or start the process. I would, I would go to, I'd petition Wake County to call this a separate project, to designate this separate and not impact the funds that are traditionally, that we would, hopefully would be traditionally available to Garner. And the second thing is, is that I think we'd be setting a bad precedent by supplying water if we did not require annexation, because everybody else that comes along, that's a stipulation. And so I think the folks need to know that, I don't think it's that large of impact having, having safe water, it's a minor cost involved there, but I notice additional taxes yet. That's, plus we, I'm sure you'll be telling us about the conditions of the roads and the implications of annexation and that sort of thing, so we need a, I'm okay with you starting it, but we need a full rundown on what, even if we require annexation, what's in store for us.
Certainly, and we can gather, I think one thing that is very critical to the discussion too, is just exactly what properties are needed to be served, because that will be the extent that we can extend the lines through the grants that we would be applying for.
You don't even know if it's adequate right away, and so it's, there's a whole hope, well, you know what they are.
There's a lot of issues in the grant application. Mr. Dickerson's seen this too, and it's a very complicated application that requires information from multiple parties that are external, and thankfully, they appear to be other county organizations or state, and I've already received some phone calls from some professionals there to help with this process. I think the big thing is finding someone that's willing to take this thing through, try to get some of the questions answered, and keep it moving, so.
If you run in, if you need somebody outside the government, but has got some familiarity with it, and I'm not talking about the firm that I used to work with, I know enough about that, but this particular gentleman that's retired that might be, provide some assistance, because one of the things you have to do there is go and interview and meet certain income requirements as a whole. This application process is complicated, it's just tedious.
Yes, sir.
But one does need, and the will, then we'll find a way.
And that would be staff's intent, again, to try, I did have a staff member attend a workshop last week regarding, just to try and get us accustomed to what is the information we're going to be looking for. That, it did help in preparation for tonight, and maybe put some questions before me that I reached out to Wake County staff and state staff, actually today, to get some questions answered, so. But I do think that beginning the process and looking, this is an ongoing issue, I think it's been present probably for a while, my understanding is that some of these residents are having to subsist on some bottled water and different things, so. Again, it would be obviously better if we could do it quicker, but I think it's just going to take time for us to do it, so.
Tony, it's, I guess it's implied that, is it anticipated the CDBG block grant would pretty well cover the cost of this project?
Councilman Marsham, my understanding that, I did some estimate today, I think that the maximum grant that we're allowed, we would be under that with what we need to do this work. So yes, sir, it is our understanding that we're eligible for it. There are some other revolving low-interest loans, but I did not feel that we would be interested in pursuing those.
Any matching requirements?
No, sir, not to my knowledge, it's a one hundred percent grant.
And Tony, just to be clear, on this grant, it would pay for the main transmission lines, and the residents would have to pay for the lines from their, to their house?
That's correct.
From the transmission line to their house, from the meter? Or another source of funds, potentially?
Hopefully during this process, that, I think that's what generated the interest from some of the state-level people that are supplying the monitoring and the bottled water wherever, if that need is indeed there, that they would try and look for some monies available to provide hookups for the plumbing costs and different fee charges that may come from the City of Raleigh required through the hookup to the system. So it's a multi-layered set of things that will require some cooperation amongst our staff, council members. Part of this is, I think, because we are getting our money for CDBG passed through from Wake County, there's some requirements that members of the council, the town manager's office, and the grant administrator have to go to a one-day, some training to make sure we know all the rules that we have to abide by. So it's a very drawn-out and complicated thing that we're not familiar with. We'll figure it out and get it going. Again, I think it's the desire of the council to do so.
I'm glad you mentioned the connection. I have seen a few instances in the past where some dollars are provided for the connection to go from the meter, which is the end of the line that the public utility owns, to the house, and then to get under the house, get to the primary connecting place, and necessary appurtenances. You show on the map here Antelope Point, is that included as well?
No, sir, it's the red here, it's Gin Street and Auburn Road. There appears to be lightaway there. Again, there's going to be survey needed if we got to that level, or when we get to that level, but again, I think our first step is to work with the county, determine exactly what our coverage area is, and then that becomes the scope or limit of the project.
Would we be doing the cost estimating?
Yes, sir.
That street, because once we go down there, the equipment will tear it all to pieces, I bet.
Yeah, I think now it's either gravel or just a dirt road, so.
Tony, do you have any idea how many of them are having problems with the water?
No, sir, I do not, and today, the conversation I have with Wake County staff, which I think are more attuned to that, Councilman Johns, than we are, I don't think they know, per the definitions that are in here, how many wells are actually affected. Again, I'm kind of scrambling to come up with exactly what information is needed to get this thing moving, and obviously, I'm going to have to work through other organizations to obtain that information, so.
You have one of the rest of this, involving my integrity, Mr. Newkirk.
He could probably share if you have questions for him, I did not realize.
Do you know approximately?
I think that Gin Street and Auburn Road?
At least nine. I know, I had some conversation with Mr. Newkirk a couple of months ago, and I brought it to the attention of engineering and made some calls to the state. There's a combination of issues. One has to do with the petroleum contamination from the former gas station, and then there's some wells that have high iron, and that may be due to shallow wells. However, they're not able to dig them deeper, because then they'll probably get into the petroleum contamination strain that's there. So that's when we started, you know, looking at what options the town might be able to help them with. Just want to make a couple of things clear, so this is an accessible project, kind of similar to what the council did with Bainbridge, so the residents are responsible for the cost of running the infrastructure and the connection to their home, absent any grants, so hopefully there'll be enough grant money to cover all or most of that cost. And then also, with the question of annexation, for some reason, if the council decides not to annex this community, they would typically be subject to double water rates. So just want to make that clear, so, you know, that everybody knows going in what the possibilities could be, but we'll see what happens when we get further down the line with the grant application.
Tony.
To know that this is a tedious, time-consuming process dealing with a bunch of government agencies at the same time, we're talking probably a three-year, three to four-year project, correct?
I would hope it wouldn't be that long for Mr. Newkirk's, the discussions today would be application in the spring, which then would be a fall award, I think, following, so maybe even a summer award if the grant, if we did receive it. And then, Councilman, if you probably added another year to design and permit, I would think we should have, we should be able to do it in that timeframe.
It's also two to four years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm not that optimistic, knowing how these things have worked in the past. I know the residents need relief, so, yeah, get started. I do agree with what Mr. Kennedy said in that, I would hope that when Wake County assesses these grants, that this is not a, and I would agree with this in any town, this is a special circumstance where you're trying to help people have safe drinking water, which is required by the law, so this should not, you know, work against someone applying for these type of grants, it should be for the benefit of everyone, so we'll see what they say. I would hope that would be the case.
And I will, and obviously, if it does present issues, I will work through the manager's office to let you know that. Again, it is, it's a three-year revolving window that we can apply for that, but if we did have some monies for the rec center, so we've done some application for that three-year window, but I'll dig into that and find out.
Tony, I don't know if you care to comment on it, but I'm recalling I attended some seminars, probably been at least three years ago or so, but it seems to me, or as I recall from that conference, that this type of issue is going to continue to persist, particularly in a county like Wake County that continues to grow as much as it does in terms of how many wells and septic systems you can poke in the ground out there before you need to go to a regular water and sewer system.
It's the, probably the third one that I'm aware of, Councilman, there was a dry cleaner in overall US four oh one that the same process went through. I think the state wound up funding that to get the water line extended over to an area near the Presbyterian Church there, so it is, you're correct, it is something that's going to continue to show up in these, especially the petroleum, where the storage tanks were underground. Again, so just to, this is something council does want us to pursue as a staff.
Pursue.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Any committee reports? Mr. Manager, your reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, town council, you have in front of you, and Yalva the Garner info report, so if you have any questions on any of those items, then also a building and permit report, that's pretty much showing steady growth in Garner, it's the variety of different types of permits in there. And you have in front of you a handout that shows some updates on some of Garner's transportation projects that are going to be coming up. We used that last week in the Connect Conference, Chamber Connect Conference, and it went over very well as we updated those participants on some of those major projects, and I think this is a publication that we'll probably put out from time to time. It was developed in the planning department, and gives a lot of information, especially with some of these road configurations that are going to be new to Garner, so we thought it'd be important to, you know, get that information out with, you know, these continuous highways and double-lane, you know, roundabouts and those type of things. So as we grow, we're going to start seeing some of this type of infrastructure to move our traffic along. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hodges. I think there was, was there a date associated with transportation update or something we wanted to do, or did you have anything else you wanted to say about this?
No.
Yep, okay.
Public meeting coming up soon?
There was a public meeting concerning four oh one coming up, let's see if I can...
On the sixteenth, Thursday, five to seven?
Yes, well, the public, the public official portion is three o'clock here at the town for public officials, and then they will have a open house for the public.
At Ernest Meyer?
Yes, is that the church? Is that the name of the church?
Ernest Meyer?
Correct, yes.
That's what I read.
Okay, I got it. Yeah. Yep. Now it'll be later, later that evening for the public portion of it.
Public portion is five to seven.
Five to seven. Hours is three to four, correct, here in town, town hall. And John, did you want to give an update on the question from...
There were two items from last week that we just want to provide an update on. One of them, I'm going to get Mr. Trezenberg to pull up map up to help with an answer about subdivision on Creech Road. While he's doing that, also give an update to everyone on the issue that was brought up about drainage under Garner Road near the railroad track just west of Vandor Springs Road. Staff went out and observed that situation in Friday's rain, took some photos of that. Mr. Chalk has done a real brief analysis to help us realize that the water's possibly flowing in a different direction than we might have thought, and it's actually an issue getting under Garner Road versus a possible, it may still be involved with the railroad, but the big issue was probably the pipe under Garner Road, so we've reached out to both North Carolina DOT maintenance as well as the railroad. The railroad's already responded, saying that they'll pass it on to their folks, and so we're going to try to get both of those agencies working together to figure out if any changes need to be made at that spot. We do have some high-water signs, that Friday's situation was enough water going across the road that we actually put out high-water warning signs, so if you do observe anything like that, let us know, we'll be glad to post those accordingly. And then the other update was a question at last week's meeting about a subdivision approved on Creech Road, and whether or not it was going to connect through to Curtis Drive, and so Mr. Trezenberg's here, and I asked him if he would just pull up a map to give you an overview of what's been approved for that, and answer questions you may have about future connectivity.
So this is the Ashton Forest subdivision plan. Originally, when this came back to you many years ago, it included a parcel on the west side of the creek, so it was both sides. That parcel had since been subdivided, and it's now just the eastern portion that's directly adjacent to Creech Road. I know that Curtis Drive is in the vicinity over here, I think it's a little bit actually further south, maybe about right here. Given that this news riparian buffer here in blue is fairly wide, and because they subdivided it directly on the center line of the stream, we don't have any mechanisms to actually make somebody build half of a crossing. They did need to have... make somebody build half of a crossing. They did need to have access for their stormwater pond. So, that's access to the stormwater pond is coming through this part of the roadway here. But at construction drawing approval, engineering will be discussing whether this even needs to be here, this little stub portion. We did want to provide for indirect connectivity in the future, but not direct cut-through type connectivity. So, we have, they have stubbed to the south. There is another position along this creek, two parcels further south, where there's an existing farm, what looks like a little farm road crossing of the stream. The stream gets shower as you move to the south. And so, if and when this parcel ever develops here between Ashton Forest and the existing Curtis Drive area, its only access now is going to be from Curtis because it won't be coming from the east. That project, we would look to have them stubbed to the south as well. So, that eventually, when you get further down, there would be a way for folks to move out, but it would not be convenient for cut-through traffic of any kind. So, that is the plan that came through. Again, because the zoning was in place, it just went to Planning Commission for concurrency check on meeting the standards of the UDO.
Jeff, there's one more map.
At staff level because of that, that's going before the council?
With the Planning Commission reviewed, yes.
And looking at this, the northern border, there's a six-foot fence. Is that the entire property or just a portion of the property?
It's immediately adjacent to Ms. Hazel's property. We reached out to her early on and had that discussion with her as to what she would like to see and what the developer was willing to provide.
I talked with you about that a couple of times. She has talked to me about that a few times. So, appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Jeff, there's one more map. It may be the next slide, I'm not sure. There's one more map where the site plan is overlaid on a GIS map and that might be helpful to be able to help make some of the, to be able to demonstrate some of the other area that you were talking about.
I wish we had lightened up the aerial photo just a little bit. You can see the southern property line here for the vacant parcel. So, again, even if you were going to try and do it, you'd have to jog it. But ultimately, you can kind of see right down here on the southern edge, there's kind of a, an interesting shadow line there in the trees on this parcel right before the image cuts off. That's the, what appears to be the remnants of an old farm path from the topography. It grades out there to some kind of cart path. But eventually, that's about where we would look to have a connection with two connections then coming north and south. So, there would not be any direct east-west, but indirectly over time. And again, they only need this piece here for access to the stormwater. So, that may get revised at construction drawing phase.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes our, the manager's reports unless there's any other questions.
Okay, council member, let's start with Ray Salton.
Over to you.
Oh, with me?
Okay.
There, why off?
Give me off. One question was about the subdivision on Creech Road, so I got taken care of. My second one was the Connect Conference last week and most of you weren't unable to attend to prior, to previous engagements. It was a very informative conference. A lot of staff was there and Chamber did a great job, had several really good discussion with residents. In fact, Rick and Adam were there filming and there's some good excerpts that they could use, just have some little blurbs about why people moved to Garner. Really positive. So, Neil and April and the folks at Chamber did a great job. So, and this, as Bobby mentioned, John mentioned, was received by folks. I don't think people realize what's going on in town right now. Plus, the 401 project's not even on here because that has, that's already been moved forward. I was, we signed up on that a couple of years ago. So, that's not even listed here. Plus, any other things that may be going on. So, this was well received. I think people look forward to seeing information like this come out in the future. So, that's all I have.
But, thank you, sir. Three or four months ago, there was a group that appeared before us to talk about historic preservation or preserving Garner's history. And some informal meetings have been held, rather large group of folks gathered just recently. The leaders of that group have sent us an email or sent us a letter requesting that, some further guidance. But there's a lot of moving parts to this. My suggestion would be, and I think it's probably based on some informal conversations that we've had with others, is that it might be appropriate to have an informal gathering of the different groups so that they could have some time for preparation for a more formal presentation back to Garner on where things stand and that, and getting closer to a recommendation with particular emphasis on the vision for preserving Garner's history. What started with four ladies, hopefully I can name them. I think it's Kay Whaley and Judy Bass and Amy Griggs and Karen Paget. Within the last week or 10 days, they've extended and opened it up for, to meet with other folks or for other folks to come and join them that have an interest in preserving Garner's history. That they, we were advised that a group as large as 27 people met, I think it was last week, which was, this is a rather large group. So, there's some interest out there. And I think the best thing is, is it gets better organized, formalized, and get some visioning about what the ultimate long-term objectives are. So, Mr. Manager, if you or whoever you designate could get the appropriate groups together and start this, that would be helpful. The reason I go on a little bit about it is to let the folks that might be looking at this that have an interest in Garner's, in preserving Garner's history, is that if you want to, if you have, have an interest in this, those names that I just called, I think Kay Whaley is probably known as Garner's informal and maybe even formal historian. So, I'm sure she and the others would be glad to, for you to join in. Number two, I have to go back and look at some notes. I think the, we're, there's a lawsuit that we currently have underway with Mr. McGinnis that's at the intersection of Jessup and Winter Locken, or is it Greenbrier? Greenbrier. Any event about?
We don't know.
Winter Locken and Jessup, thank you. About the, what we consider the illegal sale of, or conducting illegal sales there, is that there's continued advertising on his part on price to go to get that, I'm not sure what his ultimate objective is, is whether it's to close it down or just to continue to sell. But I passed that along while this lawsuit was underway. And lastly, I received a request to, for DOT to check into the erosion at the intersection of 401 and Winter Locken, which is on the western side of Greenbrier, about conduit that's under, under the exit out of Winter Locken. That's all I have.
Good. Jack? Yes, Kathy?
Yes, sir. A couple of things. I would like to see what can be done perhaps about the median on Benson Road at Garner Road. It's pretty ragged looking, not having been mowed and kind of bare. If there's something we can do to clean that up a little bit, it's, the rest of the area looks good, but that is not, not real pleasing to look at. And I've been reviewing reports that we've gotten back from Moody's and Standard and Coors. And this is not new news, but I'd just like to emphasize the good report that we got, the good remarks about financial management in the town and just, it was actually a glowing report from both organizations and our rating went up, unusual for a town the size of ours compared to other larger municipalities. So, Garner continues to be a great place to be.
Ken? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess on a slightly lighter note, hopefully all of you are aware of the new Showtime series that Ms. Dunn has put together. I think she does a pretty good job of bringing some very good entertainment in our town. So, I commend you to consider that and look at some of the upcoming activities. Also, what is not put on by her, the Broadway series that has been well received in our town, that Chamber has taken an active role in. The new season will be beginning soon and they're selling, they're selling season tickets. Got some excellent performers, one coming back that's a popular one for everybody. That's David, is it Burnham?
Burnham.
Burnham, I believe. I encourage you to consider that. And then finally, just to give a shout out to our young performers. Every summer, the town players put together a camp and youngsters come in and they're getting ready to put on Beauty and the Beast. I think that starts probably Thursday night, I believe it is. But encourage you to go out and support those young folks. They do, they do an excellent job. And the only other thing I would mention, and this is on a different topic, I saw where Rick put out some information, Miss Singleton commented on it. We just recently received a report as it relates to our town's packages, what am I trying to say?
Benefits.
Our benefits and so forth. And as was pointed out, there was an excellent article in the NNO recently regarding how the employment rate is so low and local governments are having to certainly take a look, see at what is, what is happening in the market out there. And some of you may have already spoken to our town manager as he invited us to come in to do, to talk about some of the things that were presented and what we might want to pursue in terms of some additional benefits in order to be competitive. And I encourage, encourage us all to think about those kinds of things that need to be done. So, other than that, I believe that's all I have.
Anyone else want to add anything? If not, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Well, is it at our next regular scheduled meeting that the James R. Stevens?
21st, yes, sir.
Will be recognized?
It'd be.
That's all.
One more time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.